Okay, so we're gonna take a roll call. Malcolm.
Here.
Jeremy.
Here.
Garfield.
Here.
And I am here myself. The town is recording and I'm not sure if anyone else, but the town is recording this. And this is the meeting of the Housing Subcommittee Thursday, March 30th. We'll start a little bit late, sorry about that. Roll call, we have. The first item is the approval of the minutes for February 8th. I'll be happy to put those up if anyone wants those. I know I sent them before, but did everyone get a chance to have a look at?
I just, I just read them, so.
Garfield, do you need me to put that up or are you okay?
I do not. No, I'm good.
You're good, okay, so I have, I'll take a motion to accept the February 8th minute.
So moved.
Okay, second.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Malcolm.
Hi.
Jeremy.
Hi.
Garfield.
Hi.
And I'm I, okay, great. Subcommittee's announcements and statements, Malcolm.
Um. Since our last meeting, we had a discussion of the, of our spreadsheet at the Planning Board meeting. And the Plan Board strongly encourages that one of the things we do is identify those things that a housing expert employee in the town could do to make that argument, to see if we could put together a case for either hiring an employee or looking to BRPC perhaps to get us kickstarted or some other means to get it kickstarted. But the feeling was the first step was really to get to get that together as far as what, what those items that we identified that would be helped by having a housing person in Town Hall.
Okay, is this for, because we, is this trying to get into the budget that we just completed with the public hearing or is this for?
Well, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen this year, but if we, if we start making the case, we maybe go out and get some funding or get some help from BRPC or maybe there may be other sources as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that, I, you know, that, that was brought up during the, the budget and the thought is in the meantime, if the Affordable Housing Trust Fund wanted to use some of their money to get some help, they, you know, they certainly could do that, but thank you for that. Is there anything else?
Well, we could also, well, for that same thing, the Planning Board could choose to write a CPC application or CPA application of, to fund that position for a period of time, whether it be one year or whatever. And so it doesn't have to necessarily just come from the trust or from the regular budget.
Okay.
I guess, yeah, the only thing about CPC money is it would, CPA money would have to be on affordable housing, not housing in general.
So the, yeah, so the, yeah, so it would have to, so then we'd, it'd have to be initiatives that are for affordable housing, so meaning the cap of 100% area and mean income. So it couldn't be for things that were like 120 or that sort of thing.
Okay, so that's a, that's a good question. Anything else?
Can we backtrack for a second?
Yeah, well, we're just.
Yeah, I have something.
Yeah.
Lee.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Did I just hear that we're kind of looking for, or, or the suggestion was to find or hire someone to guide us, if you will, if I understood that correctly?
Well, I mean, we have 12 items on our checklist that have been identified as, as needing somebody in Town Hall to run with them. And that, that's really what, what, what this is about. One of those might be having like the, the housing summit that we talked about.
Okay.
So it's.
It's something that's actually going to cost money.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna cost money, but it could be from CPA funds at least to start with. I mean, the idea is, the idea is that that it would be super beneficial and so then we could use, you know, and in order to test it, if we limit the scope of what that person was doing to affordable housing, then we could use CPA funds or we could apply for CPA funds, you know, in that phase and then, you know, to figure out if this is something that the town is actually beneficial enough for the town that the town were to pay for.
All right, so let me ask you this, is this something that, so that's why, I guess it's one of the things I wanted to know, is this gonna cost the taxpayers money? Because we're spending more money and we seem to like to spend money, not us particularly, but the town in Great Barrington. So every time I turn around, we gotta hire somebody to do something.
So it doesn't, it doesn't. Yeah.
Money's not costing the taxpayer money, I'm all right.
So it wouldn't necessarily have to cost taxpayers money, right? So one of the things that a position like this could do is, could seek out grant money so that in order to pay for itself or in this, or we could continue to pay for it if it was limited affordable housing through the CPA funds. And then if that person was also going after grant money for affordable housing, then, you know, it could offset the cost to the CPA funds. So I mean, there's lots of ways to do it. It doesn't necessarily have to come from taxpayer funds. I mean, that has to be a discussion later if it comes to that, that, you know, it's, you know, that whoever decides that we don't want to do it through CPA funds, but we want to continue to do it, then that would be part of the budgetary process. But, you know, at least in the initial stages of this, it doesn't have to cost taxpayers anything additional to what, what, what is already going into the pot of CPA from tax funds, like it's not gonna increase that.
I'm, I'm curious to your question though, Garfield, I mean, are you opposed to spending any money? Or are you, or are you opposed to spending money that's not worthwhile?
Spending money, I'm opposed, right, I mean, one is money that's not worthwhile and the other is taxpayers' money because we just did the budget, you know, things are, uh, it, it's not cheap town, I don't, I just don't want to see the burden on the town to have to pay for this. I'm not saying I have the time and I get it, but if they ask the case, I'd rather see us try to work around it or brainstorm between us and if we have to carry on, bring in some others. There's some chosen people out here that I, I don't, I don't know, I just don't like spending a lot of money. We do it all the time. And, and I did have one other thing, if I could, and I was thinking, at first I thought it might have been an okay idea, but I don't know how it would work. But I know we have the school coming up and I know we're trying to save our seniors some monies. So I'm wondering, and I kind of thought, if there was one kind of way, is it possible to have either a moratorium or something like that for seniors on the tax of the new school? Because that's certainly gonna bump things up. But at first I thought, well, maybe that's possible, but then again, Great Barrington, last I looked, it said we had a 23.6% elderly citizen. So that maybe that might be too much, but I thought it was a way to maybe, maybe we could have a moratorium or one year not pay ta, higher taxes for the seniors or something to, to help them, or something along those lines.
I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a question for this committee.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
I had a subcommittee because that's, yeah, I mean, that would require, yeah, it would require a lot of analysis to see what the tax burden would be for the rest of the, you know, and I think, I don't know if, I don't know if that can go without a town meeting vote.
Um.
Okay, I'm all for that, but I guess I'm asking, can we get behind that or we can we throw it out as one of our thoughts or something like that?
I think we have to, I, I don't, I don't think we have enough to go by yet. We don't, we, do we have any idea of what it's gonna cost? Do we have any idea then what the additional tax burden would be on everyone else? And, you know, like how many, how many dollars per thousand are we talking about?
I mean, Jeremy.
Yeah, I, I get it. I, I'm just saying, I get it, but we know the tax are, they're gonna go up regardless of actually knowing how much it is at the time. I mean, I understand that point, but, but they are gonna go up. So, I mean, it doesn't, I'm not bummed if it doesn't happen. It was just an idea that's, ah, maybe we should say, because we're looking to pay seniors money, so maybe we can do a moratorium for years.
I mean. I, I think, I wonder if, I mean, and, and then you wanna pursue this away in a way, right? You don't, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I really have to think about this.
Interject, so I think Garfield, if, if you wanna kind of maybe delve into it a little bit and get some numbers and maybe talk to Ross and, and the school committee and then come back with some solid numbers. I mean, I think, you know, I can understand the, the idea for a moratorium to help seniors, but without any kind of facts and figures, it's, it's hard for us even to have a conversation.
Well, I mean, we, we have other things on our list.
Not hard to have a conversation, we just still have a lot of knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, so you know, what we could do is, you know, we could add some kind of on our list because that, that's the beauty of this list. We could add this, you know, a moratorium for seniors to try to give them a tax break and.
But, you know, I mean, we have something before us, right? With Vivian's proposal and so, I mean, that can provide a lot of, you know.
Kind of going into other territory, but before we get too much in the weeds here, because we're just kind of going around talking about, you know, comments and announcements, so Malcolm, I'm assuming that you're wrapped up. Garfield, did you have anything else besides the idea for the moratorium or should I get to Jeremy? We're just basically just, you know, talking, having announcements and then we'll kind of go do a postmortem about the, the meeting. But Garfield, did you have anything else? Do you wanna bring up? Garfield?
Garfield's still there.
Uh, he's still there. Garfield, can you hear us? Garfield?
Did he get disconnected?
Um, maybe, he's on a.
I see the, him, the, his email address.
Okay, there he is. Uh, Garfield, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, my computer disconnected.
There you go. I think you just got cut off. So do you have anything else besides the, the idea for the moratorium?
At the moment, thank you.
Okay, Jeremy, did you have anything?
I, I mean, just another thing along with what Malcolm was saying about that is, we had talked about also going to the trust or engaging the trust that with what they might be, and so this is, I guess, for Garfield, what they might be interested in a position, like an affordable housing staff position. So what kinds of things that they might need from that person?
Say, say it again, Jeremy, I'm sorry, say that again.
So, so, you know, in, in thinking about this, and this position, like some sort of staff person on affordable housing, with regards to the trust, what they, what the trust might want of this sort of position, whether, you know, it simply is just attending meetings and, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay, I, I'll find out.
And, and part of this is, part of the discussion was just a, you know, there's, like, all of these committees and boards are volunteer and so, you know, there is a limited amount of time that each of us can put into it. And so, you know, at some point in time, and this might not be it, but at some point in time, it might be a good idea to have some sort of position in town because Chris is sort of, you know, he's sort of topped out with what he's doing.
Well, there, we do have the arrangement with the BR, you know, Berkshire.
Yeah, and, and that's what.
And we have a certain amount of, you know, consulting hours there that, you know.
So that was Malcolm's point is to first, I mean, that's probably the first place to look. Um, because, yeah.
Yeah, so, but, you know, that's something that ideally, I mean, we could either ask Chris to join us in a meeting and just, you know, talk to us about the hours that he can reasonably see that we might be wanting to, to hire someone as a consultant to, you know, to, to support him. Let me just, I see, I see, hold on one second, let me see Eileen's, Eileen, I'm just gonna let you talk for a sec. You, Eileen, do you need anything or? Can you hear me, Eileen? Eileen? You're unmuted, you can talk. I didn't know if there was a problem.
No, I didn't realize my hand had gone up.
Okay, I'm gonna, okay. All right, so anything else? And then with me, I'll just, I'll, I'll roll my comments into kind of the postmortem of our discussion because I just wanted to give you an update. Actually, no, I do have one other thing. So the short-term rental bylaw, so they're gonna, we're gonna be going live on March 30th. And there have been letters sent out to all the operators of short-term rentals. So they've, by now, pretty much everyone has received them and we're gonna be going.
We're live today.
Today?
Today's the 30th.
Yeah, oh yeah, today is the 30th, so.
Oh, wow.
Yep, um, so we'll see, probably by the next meeting, we'll have an idea of how things are going and get, get some feedback, so, so that's, that's good. All right, so what I'd like to do is, if you can remember so far back, because it's been a while since we had that meeting with the two proposals, what I wanted to do was just, and that was back in February, so it's been a while since we met. So February 13th was the presentation to the Joint Session of the Select Board and Planning Board when we presented the two proposals. One was a tax exemption for owners of affordable year-round rental housing. And the second proposal was a real estate transfer fee to support affordable and workforce housing. So I just wanted to start with the tax exemption for owners of affordable year-round housing. And I know it's, it's quite a while since we, we had that meeting, but I wanted to kind of get a sense of, from the subcommittee, what your thoughts were, the, some of the questions, how you think it went. I'd be happy to throw up the, the presentation if you want, but it's just kind of get. I, you want me to?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I.
Okay, and feel free to talk while I'm, I'm bringing that up. So we're gonna talk about the tax exemption for owners of affordable year-out rental housing first and then, so I'm gonna.
So I did have a little bit of change of heart since our last meeting or I'm, since our joint meeting. For me.
Uh huh, go ahead.
And so I, I am really interested in seeing what it's gonna cost, meaning the taxpayers that are gonna pay for it. And, and actually I have a similar feeling on both and yeah, so I'll just leave it at that. And so the other one is, the other one's not a taxpayer thing because it's either the buyer, the seller or, or both. But, but I, I am interested in the, and the analysis that we're gonna do and what we're talking about, like, you know, anyway.
Was there anything, and I'm just gonna share my screen right now, was there anything that you were doing? Can you, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Um, so I'm gonna get to kind of the meat of it, so was there anything in particular, Jeremy, that?
Well, it was, so Jonathan shared, I don't know if he shared it with the Select Board as well, but he had shared an article, I think it was a Globe article about, about housing and it was definitely written from one side. But it was talking about housing costs in Massachusetts, I think it was greater than Massachusetts, but in this area and that how it's becoming difficult and causing the, you know, migration away or migration, that would, I guess it would be, yeah, the migration away from Massachusetts. So anyways, it's just something I'm thinking about as we do, as we propose all of these things.
Okay, so do you have any questions on just the, the general?
No, 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 I, I understand the general part about it, I just wanna, once we, once we get a little bit more, especially with this one, to see what we're talking about and what we're proposing, you know, are we gonna propose a certain, a cap, a certain amount of funds that will be available for this or is it gonna be uncapped? And then what the, you know, and what the various things, how those affects the tax rate. I mean, I think the capped one is very, it's much easier to determine what it's gonna cost, but.
Yeah, so I just put the exemption example up just to refresh our memory of, of what we're talking about. And I did speak with Ross today and check in on both proposals to see how it will actually look out, look, what, what it'll look like when this actually goes for public comment. But just to recap with this idea is that, you know, let's say, for example, for a duplex and an owner has a duplex and they rent half of it out affordably, that they would get, they would get an abatement on that portion of the property that they're renting affordably. And the idea is that the town, you know, would be getting an affordable unit for, for a good price. So when we're looking at the cost of new construction for housing unit, we're looking at, you know, upwards of $350,000 for a typical unit versus something like this, which would, might be, you know, $3,000 a year that the, the town would be, would be losing in a sense. So it's, it's, you know, in, in my mind, it's, it's, it's a good deal for the town rather than having to, to really come up with 200, anywhere from $250,000 for an affordable housing unit. And the other thought about this is that these kind of units would be integrated in, so we wouldn't be, you know, relying on waiting for construction. We wouldn't be relying on land, you know, the, the ups and downs of, of, you know, the prices with construction. So it would be units that are actually in neighborhoods. And the idea is to try to incentivize someone that has a property to, to rent affordably, so. But as you said, Jeremy, the, the mystery is how many people will take this up and the nice, but this, but this idea is that we could, we could start slow, so we, we could have a cap. And we could say, okay, well, we're prepared to lose X amount of dollars, you know, for the first year. So we could have a, a pilot program and say, okay, well, you know, we'll set aside, let's say $100,000 and see how many, you know, how many property owners take this up. And, you know, how many actual units are we getting for that money? So it's not something that we have to have a, you know, shot in the dark. We could actually try to cap and, and this is one of the things that says, we would want to determine the area median income levels to qualify for exemptions. And we could cap the number of exemptions, so we could either cap it by a number of owners that we would, you know, offer annual exemptions to or set a dollar amount. And so, so that's the nice thing, Jeremy, to, to speak to your concern about money is that
Yeah.
Yeah, slow rolled out and we could phase it in.
I do have a couple of other concerns, but.
I'd like to go after Jeremy then.
Yeah. Jeremy, do you wanna?
So one of the, the things that came up when we were talking about it was, are we gonna get any new units? Meaning that, you know, there's probably a number of people that already qualify for this with what they're doing now. And so then there's that. I, I don't know if a way around that is to then, you know, set the, the affordable rate, meaning the, what percentage of area and median income and make it lower. Um, also this, uh, so that, so that was one, one concern is that, you know, are we just really gonna give, uh, and which is, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but are we just gonna give the incentive to people that are already basically doing it? Um, and meaning it's basically a reward for people that have already been, you know, amazing citizens and providing housing at, you know, lower than market rate or whatever. And then the other idea is in setting the limit is that what we brought up is that even at 100% of area and mean income, I mean, looking at the numbers that Chris was throwing out, which we, granted, we don't know how real world, that, how real world that is, meaning if those are real rental numbers that we are already that, there's rentals that are gonna just, that are already there, you know, and so uh, you know, so, so thinking more about this proposal, I do, I, I do have concerns whether or not we're actually gonna really get something that we don't already have. And, and with respect to that, and it was brought up again at the meetings, you know, right now, Great Barrington is not in the business of creating affordable housing. We're in the business of putting a small amount of money into affordable housing and getting a huge return for it. Because there's, there's a lot of different organizations that are active in Great Barrington which are raising money, you know, raising money on their own from sources outside of town funds. And so, you know, anyway.
All right, Garfield, thanks, thank you, Jeremy.
All right, I'm trying to maybe do devil's advocate and maybe I'm not even, because it's been a bit, if I'm correct. But one of the questions that hit me is, how are the other folks gonna react that are, are upset about short-term rental? Will this affect that? In other words, are they gonna say, look at these guys, now they're getting a break, but now you did this to me, so I can't get this extra money, but I don't have a duplex, so now I can't do this. So will that cause a problem? Is that going to be a hassle? And I think you said maybe we could, we could have a list or we could just just, in essence, make it a shortlist, if you will, as, as we can just start small. But then again, you know, when it's money, people are gonna start crying about it and they're not gonna know, well, you took him. When can I qualify? Are you gonna get me next year? Am I, is there gonna be a list for us to go through and change it every year? Will the same people get it? That kind of stuff, that was the kind of couple of questions I had.
Okay, all right. So to your question about the short-term rentals, you know, we're not preventing anyone from short-term renting property. So they're not gonna be affected by this. So they're, you know, there, there's not a moratorium on short-term rentals, it's just that we're limiting the number of days in property, so I don't think that they would be affected. But you're, you're saying that we're giving, we would be offering abatement for some residents versus others, is that what you're saying?
Right, but basically, and yeah, and I'd be surprised, I, I would not be surprised if the STR folks started whining because they've already had, so. Anyway, that, that's my thought and I know that happens when there's money involved.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, yes, giving it to someone, not others and others being upset.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha. Malcolm, do you have any thoughts about this proposal? Since we had the, the presentation? Oh, you're muted.
How I got muted? I think uh, these are both good concerns, both in terms of the, you know, thing, you know, people that already have qualified and also Garfield's concerns about what, you know, people who really don't qualify for this, how are they gonna be impacted if they, they're shut out of other things? But I think that the only way to figure this out is to, you know, get a solid proposal and then, you know, run it up to the flagpole and see, see what the concerns are. There are, we don't want any unintended consequences, so we have to study these carefully. And I think there are some real concerns, but I, I don't think we can address those concerns unless we know what the proposal was.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, so what, what's the, what the intention now is that, you know, Ross is gonna run some numbers, run some different scenarios, provide a spreadsheet and we'll have, you know, public input session for, for just these reasons. So we definitely wanna, you know, give it. So we definitely wanna, you know, give it time to flesh out and hear people's concerns. Um, and, you know, the idea is since this is something that Province Town, for example, has implemented, you know, the idea would be to, to invite one of the uh, the townspeople in and talk to us about their experience, um, which I think would be very, very helpful, so. Okay, so um, we'll move on to, let me stop the share for this one. So that the next proposal that we presented, let me just pull it up. Um, the next proposal is the real estate transfer fee to support affordable and workforce housing. So I'm gonna, uh, if you guys wanna start, um, if anyone has anything to talk about, and I'll put up that, that slideshow again.
Please.
All right, um. So this is the real estate transfer fee to support affordable and workforce housing. Uh, this is to establish a sustainable revenue source uh for the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, I'm just gonna go, so essentially in a nutshell, a, a fee between a half percent and two percent would be applied to certain um types of real estate transaction, transactions, such as properties sold above a certain percentage of the median sales, uh, median sale price for single family homes. So um, you could either do it by a percentage. So if uh, you know, this, the median price is, you know, so much, then you could say, okay, well, a hundred and fifty percent of the, the median sale price. Or you could have a number, and let's say you say any homes sold for over a million dollars would fall into this net of having a percentage added to the uh, the sale price. And so some of the questions is, you know, who would pay the fee? So it could be split between the buyer or seller, or it could be paid only by the buyer or the seller. And exemptions can be added and adopted in the future. So this is, again, something that could be phased in. Uh, we could make sure that uh, you know, there's populations that aren't included. So we could have exemptions, for example, uh, any transfers between family, any transfers involving affordable housing units, any transfers of convenience or made as gifts, or transfers involving vulnerable populations. So there's, you know, all sorts of exemptions we could um, put onto this. And uh, again, the idea is to um, generate some revenue so that we have the ability to, you know, hire consultants, run programs, um, you know, build housing. So basically to give the Affordable Housing Trust Fund um, an ability to be sustainable. Um, so this is something that uh, I was talking again to Ross about it. And what he's gonna do is uh, he's going to take, he's gonna work from the calendar year of um, twenty twenty-two, since it's complete, and he's gonna provide us a spreadsheet such as this one. And he's gonna array it from low to high in terms of uh median sale, sales. And he's gonna find the median um, number. And for, in this example, uh, the median number was four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And he'll uh mark out what, um, you know, a hundred and fifty percent of that would be, two hundred percent of that would be. Or he could also mark out an example, let's say, over a million dollars. And then it's just a matter of plugging in a formula, cause I was asking him how much, um, you know, is this gonna take a lot of resources? Are we gonna hire, need to hire people and extra people in the assessor's office? And he says, essentially, it's, it's just real straightforward. You plug in a number, he runs a spreadsheet and he could get a sense of what we would yield each year from a transfer fee. So in this example, and again, this is only example, um, for, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but for a property sold, anything over uh, a million dollars and up, um, if we were to attach a two percent uh, transfer fee on to that, we would be looking for around two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, you know, you could back into this by, you know, how much money are we trying to replenish in the housing trust fund? Or we could, you know, back it in on how many um, homes we wanna be in the net, so to speak. So, you know, we could make it really close and and say anything over a hundred percent area median income would be um, would be a, a, you know, part of this transfer fee, or we could just go above it. So again, you could add a percentage or you could say a number. So you might wanna say, you know, any so, any home sold over eight hundred thousand dollars would have, you know, a one percent transfer fee added to that. And the nice thing with this is that we can have a sense of how much this might yield for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund each year. Um, and, you know, this is something that uh, obviously we need to to flesh out in terms of, first of all, just the, do the citizens want something like this? Does this make sense? Um, and, you know, what's, what's the thresholds? Um, and what, what are the exemptions? So um, there is legislation going on right now um, in various municipalities. Uh, there is one that is um, an overall legislation so that we wouldn't have to uh, have a home rule petition. Um, at this point, we do need to go to a home rule petition, so it would have to go through town meeting. And then we would have to uh, have legislation filed on our behalf. Um, then it would have to go through the House and Senate, and then the governor would have to sign. So, and then it would go back to town meeting. So there's, there's quite a lot of steps in this, and there are other towns actively working on something similar to this. So.
Lee, why, why, why are we discussing this? I mean, we've already discussed it, the select board has already discussed it, the select board has instructed staff to come up with proposals for that. I thought this meeting, we would be discussing the proposals. Why are we going to the same, same thing again? Why are we just?
No, no, I'm just recapping it since it's been since February eighth to do this, I'm not trying to.
I don't, I don't know that.
We're not discussing, well, I mean.
But you said a couple.
Let this back up, so.
You said Ross was gonna give us information that we could go run with, but we don't, we're not gonna run.
No, I know that.
Yeah, but what you just said, so is staff working on this or aren't?
Yes, yes, it is. That, I just said that, that now that Ross is working on this.
Okay, and, and is he gonna come up with a proposal for town meeting, or is he just gonna come up with data for us?
No, what he's gonna do is he's gonna come up with a uh, some, some numbers, and then he's gonna have town staff run um, a public uh, input hearing, I believe. And then it's gonna be um, discussions. And then with those discussions, then I believe it'll make, there'll be a determination whether that goes onto a town, uh, a special town warrant. So, all, all I'm doing is just refreshing it, I'm not, you know, if, if you want me to stop sharing it, I will.
Well, I mean, I, I, I mean, this one's all.
Yeah, well, all I'm saying is that this is, you know, it was almost two months, it was February eighth since we had this discussion, so. Or February, it was in February, so. Um, did anyone, ma- um, Jeremy or Garfield, did you have any? So essentially, the next steps is that Ross is gonna put together some data and uh, put it into a format that the town can run it by the public for input, so.
Are you so, being a member of the Affordable Trust Fund, I like the, I like the idea, it doesn't sound, it doesn't cost taxpayers any money or tick anybody off, because these will be newly sold homes and there won't be anything existing or anything, any competition, it doesn't sound, I like the idea.
Okay, all right. So um, and Jeremy, did you have anything to, to add to this or?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, the taxpayer concerns or the, and not taxpayer, but the towns person concerns might be, you know, if, if the transfer fee is paid by the seller, that might be a concern. Um, if this is gonna be something that's gonna make it, um, although, you know, I don't know if anything can do this at the, at this point, but if it's gonna be more difficult to sell a home in Great Barrington, or whether the price of the home will be, that you're able to sell it at, will be less because of this, and, you know, so things like that. Um, so I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a complete slam dunk. Um, and, but, I mean, I think it's, I think it's worth pursuing and putting something out there and seeing what. Yeah, I mean, I think the public comment will be, you know, I mean, I think that'll be good if there's a good amount of, if there's a good amount of comments and not just a little bit.
Okay, um, so moving on, we had, we started talking a bit, a little about the housing consultant and the item that the planning board wanted us to do. So if you'd like, I can put up our worksheet, um, and we can start going through that. And, you know, maybe making uh, notes on where we think that a house, a consultant might wanna take the um, you know, take that task from volunteers such as us and and run with that. So does that sound good to everyone?
Yeah.
I mean, there's a number, there's a number of things on that list that staff is already doing. And so if we come up with one of those things that staff is already doing, we should ask, we should ask staff if that's something that would be beneficial to be taken off their plate. Because I think there's a lot of these things that are already happening on a staff level. And so I don't know if necessarily that needs to be put into the hands of the new.
Yeah, yeah.
Staff position.
Yeah, can everyone see this?
I can, yeah.
Okay, so um, what we can do is we can, you know, just refresh our memory. This is the one that was uh, updated that uh, Malcolm discussed at the last meeting, the uh, the joint session of the planning board and the select board.
Maybe you can read them out, cause the one, what I'm looking at is just the pinwheel.
Oh, okay.
It says it's loading.
Okay, can um, Malcolm, can you see it and Garfield?
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
Do you need me to uh? This is the right one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why mine isn't loading.
Oh.
But it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, I can see it fine.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, go ahead.
So I, I've kind of um, identified it, I think there are about twelve items on the list that um, uh, have uh, um, a uh, where a uh, housing expert in town hall could help.
Okay.
Uh, and uh, let's see, I, I'm, my list is a little different numbered.
Um, you have an updated, do you a different one or?
Um, yeah, um.
Do you want me to show, do you wanna share yours or?
Maybe, maybe you could let me share and I could uh, uh, share mine then. Cause I do have one, I took a shot at, let's see, it was disabled screen sharing, let's see. You're gonna have to enable it for me, please.
Oh, okay, I made you a co-host.
There it is, okay, good enough, yep. Okay, over on the right, um, I just jotted down some things that um, I thought uh, uh, could be useful. So for example, number one, which is create affordable housing units from lighted properties. Somebody has to develop a strategy for the uh, how we would uh, work with the Attorney General's Receivership Program and follow up with individual properties. That's, that's the kind of thing that uh, I think we need to outline here. Uh, so number two, the person would apply for CDBG grants, follow up with applications, kind of what Chris did with um, the CDBG grants that we had a couple of years ago, uh, which I think turned out very well, but it, it was work that he had to do. Um, number three was the grants for rehabbing and converting multi-unit homes. Well, somebody's gonna have to explore and pro- uh, and apply for rehab grants, follow up with applications from people who, who want those grants. There's a whole bunch of things um, that uh, are really identification and coordination things. So basically, what the person would have to do from, for all of these things is identify uh, an inventory, create an inventory of the subject properties, whether we're talking about foreclosed properties or lighted houses or downtown housing, uh, all of those things. Somebody would have to create an inventory of the subject properties and then develop and implement, implement a strategy for them.
So Malcolm, with that, with that one, I, I, I don't know if that's not already happening, but sometimes that one is also sensitive, um, because of the nature of it. And um, and so like, staff might have a lot of these things in mind, but they might not have an actual like list because of how sometimes these things can be very sensitive. Um.
Yeah, there may be some things that we've put on the list here that cross the line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I wa- I, 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 I think a lot of that one might already be happening. Um, but just, you know, because of maybe the ownership situation or um, you know, that it's a little bit more um, trying to step lightly, or I don't know if that's the right word.
You certainly don't have to step lightly on the foreclosed properties.
Yeah.
Like existing houses with potential for conversion, that kind of thing. I mean, that, that's, yeah, but, I mean, we put it on the list, and if we wanna do it, then somebody's gonna have, that's what they're gonna have to do.
Yeah.
Um, the same with affordable downtown housing. And then down here on number nine, work with landlords, upgrade apartments and maintain affordability. Well, first of all, we need an inventory. So that's, you know, that's, that's.
Well, but also, I mean, that one, you know, on the, on the other end too, that just someone to, for landlords to then go to, that can provide help, um, like we don't, that, I mean, I think that's probably beyond the bandwidth right now that we have in, in town staff, like someone that someone could go to, you know, for any of those kinds of things. And like, they want, they're interested in creating affordable housing, whether it be an existing, they're a house, or they wanna add an ADU, or they wanna, you know, whatever, that, something like that would be great.
So how about a resource for landlords and then consider a proactive approach?
Yeah, yeah, so both, right? Yeah.
Um, the housing symposium, uh, somebody could organize that. Um, number sixteen was facilitate development of infill and rear lots, well, we need an inventory. Uh, or maybe that's, you know, serve as a resource.
Yeah, I think both is probably.
But I didn't, I wasn't thinking that.
I mean, and that's kind of the idea behind the trust, well, I don't know if it started there. But anyway, the idea with the trust, like the test case ADU thing, right? So then something to be able to point to and say like, hey, this is a thing going on, you know, anyone that's interested, you know? Kind of thing, and then, you know, whether the trust has the bandwidth to be able to really help a person from, you know, I mean, if someone very savvy comes in, you know, it's gonna be super easy, like, wow, I never thought of that, that's great. Let me do it. But if someone, you know, needs a lot of help, then a position like this could be like, you know?
I, I, I'm not, I, I was always curious as to why the trust was going to uh, build an ADU, I mean, we have ADUs around, if the trust could get some agreement with an ADU landowner.
Yeah.
Test.
Well, I think there was a couple of things around that. One was like the pad and the hookup thing, right, which would be a new thing. Um, uh, like a.
Tiny home.
Yeah, so like, so like um, helping to supplement, uh, putting in an ADU, right? So they'll help with the pad and the hookup in order to, you know, guarantee that uh, that um, tiny home will be affordable for whatever, you know? So I, I mean, and I think they, so I think there was a couple of different ideas that sort of melded together. Um, but, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, they could, of course, go that way as well. Um, but I think.
Yeah, the point is, but education grant and.
Yeah. I think the idea was they had a little bit of interest, um, a little bit of interest um, for like a test case. And so, you know, to put it out there. I mean, I don't know, but I, I, I think that's may have been what was happening as well. As well, whoops.
Then um uh number twenty-one is create programs to match landlords and tenants. Well, I mean, it needs a program. To enlist landlords and publicize it to potential tenants. Uh, and then uh. Number twenty-two is advocacy for uh change. This is uh. Having to do with changing, basically changing the building code to some extent, um, uh. Or at least the definition of affordable housing, you know, as that, as it's related. Um, but I think uh somebody really needs to dig further into what the problems and potential solutions are. And there's probably reg- legislative or regulatory actions on that one. So um.
That's, that's a good, uh, that's definitely a good list, Malcolm.
Got a good start.
Yeah, yeah.
If if you like, I'll, I'll actually uh take in and try to flesh this out. Into more of a report. Okay, here are the things that the. Um, uh, you know, we've talked about that might benefit from having somebody at town hall doing it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. But you know, the thought is, you know, I know we're talking about funding and and where's this money gonna come from and, you know, we're concerned about the. You know, further burden on taxpayers, so. You know, we're not obviously gonna have this ready for the town meeting on May first, um, but. There is money that's planned for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from the town. I I don't have the money, yeah, number five, there was a two hundred and fifty thousand, Garfield, that was.
It's either one seventy-five, I love one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, it was, yeah, hundred, anyways, so, you know, let's say that assuming that that goes through and a town meeting. Uh, as a special article, you know, that is something that, you know, we could advocate if if we have this list, Malcolm. And say, you know, we've, we can identify these, um, you know, where the, where a consultant would really come in handy and these are the items that we. We feel they can, you know, help us with. You know, would you be willing to use some of this money from the town to to begin this process rather than waiting for next town meeting?
Yeah, well, well, there's a midpoint too, right? There's gonna be a, we're still thinking there's gonna be a special town meeting. And so there's nothing to say that there couldn't be a CPA proposal for that. Um, you can, you can off-cycle um propose things to the CP- uh to the CPC. For CPA funding off-cycle, right? And so, yeah, that could happen for that. I mean, I think. You know, you'd have to really get the trust on board at at this point, if you're interested in that. Um, or put some kind of proposal to the board for after they get the funding, like, hey, would you be interested in funding this? Um, I mean, I think if you really want it to happen. Um, and take one of the things out of it, then I would put together a CPA. You know, application, because the, you know, I mean, the trust might have ideas of what they wanna spend. The money that they've asked for on, and so, you know, um, I don't know if. They would be necessarily happy with, you know, taking that down by whatever number we're talking about.
And and the nice thing with the, you know, the the grant for the Berkshire, you know, the the shared services, the Berkshire Regional Planning. Um, consultant, you know, we could probably find out uh from Chris, you know. Any of this be used for this person that we're already paying for.
Yeah, that. The last one, like that seemed to, and the symposium, I mean, both of those things kind of scream, right? You know, getting something more, more uh regional to happen, right?
Well, exactly, yeah. So I know, you know, the uh, this, the CDC and construct. Um, and and Berkshire Housing, I mean, we're all of um a regional push and group that that's working together. And the housing symposium could be something that could be done regionally, you know, to take it off the hands of the the town.
Well, also the advocacy thing too, right? Because, yeah, I mean, it would comes much stronger, well, maybe not, if Western Mass, cause Western Mass.
I mean, the nice thing with with this report, Malcolm, is, you know, once, once we have this, we could sit down and say, okay. Chris, what's, what's realistically what you're doing already or talk to Ross in terms of the inventory and maybe we have this already in-house. And we won't have to spend as much money on a consultant than we, you know, we think, but.
Yeah.
This is great, great, great job.
And by the way, the highlighted ones here uh are the ones that are already in process.
Yeah, yeah.
So. There's a bunch of them here from the select board and the planning board.
Yep. Good job. Well, so listen, um, I wanna kind of wrap this up, because I know that we all have lives. And this is great, so thank you, Malcolm, and you'll.
Thank you, Malcolm.
And and send this around to the group, right? Um, not, we can't work on it, obviously, but we'll get a a PDF. Uh, so, let's see, is there anything uh before I go to citizen speak and media speak that any of the. The committee members wanna bring up before we wrap up, um.
Well, I just, yeah, I I I like the meeting, I like the way we're going. I I I think it's getting a little more cohesive and Malcolm, thank you very much. For your work, uh, yes, yeah, and and yes, I like it.
Okay, excellent.
A little clearer for me than it had been before, because you know, I had this thing about, we have seventy-five, you know, committees doing almost the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, let me just think of a, for next meeting, are we okay with meeting like in a a month or so or um? You know, than that month, this month work.
No more, but a month would be good.
Okay, so it's five thirty work for everyone, it looks like on a Thursday, um. We're looking at like a month would be the April twenty-seventh.
That's a planning board of.
Yeah, and I have.
Thursday's not, Thursday is not a good day for me, actually.
Um, hmm. Yeah, I have, I have some big surgery on April twenty-sixth, so I'm gonna be out for a couple of weeks around that.
How are Wednesdays?
Well, yeah, Wed- Wednesday's fine.
I'm out between, let's say, the twenties, uh, twenty-sixth is the day of my surgery, so I I could do it the twenty-fifth.
About the nineteenth?
Um, I am. I'm away that week.
So is, are people available Tuesday? Cause Lee was saying the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth is.
I, I'm flying back from Spokane on Tuesday. But, yes.
How about the fall in the lake, like May second, I should.
Well, you know what, I'm not flying. I'm not going to Spokane, Martha's going to Spokane.
So are you available on the twenty-fifth?
Yes, yes.
I can't make any guarantees.
Okay, do you wanna shoot for, is that you, Garfield? Did we lose him?
Yeah, I think we might have lost him.
I heard a scream.
I think, I think he'll come back. I think, I think it was his internet, hopefully.
Um, okay, so let's say tentatively Tuesday, April twenty-first at five thirty.
Are we, it's still gonna be. Or twenty.
Oh, sorry, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Eight fifth, excuse me, twenty.
Yeah, we, we may not be able to have a Zoom.
Yeah.
No, we can. The governor extended it yesterday.
Oh, cool.
Video.
Yeah.
Did she, so now we have to put a new name to these uh, to our little statement at the beginning of the meetings now. Cause it's.
I know, we're gonna have.
It's her order.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, she.
Governor Baker's order anymore.
Well, I guess we could say she extended his order.
Yeah, so it's a, it's the supplemental budget, including the remote meeting extension that happened yesterday. So, I'll change that. Uh, yes, yes, we can, thank goodness. Um, all right, so I don't know if Garfield is back. Um, but if he's not back.
If he has a problem with that, we'll have to phone another time.
Okay, so.
It was, it was sounding like he might not know for a little bit.
Okay.
If I was hearing right, but I didn't, but it was very little that I'm going on.
Okay, all right, so tentatively Tuesday, um, April twenty-fifth at five thirty. And let me open it up to um citizens speak. Is there anyone citizen that would like to talk? Uh, okay. One. Eight five, you can talk.
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hi, Michelle.
Hi.
Hello.
Hey, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Michelle LeBeire, Seventy Division Street. Uh, just one technical point. I tried several times to. Log into the Zoom meeting and I wasn't able to, so I apologize for being on the phone. Um, with with regard to the, I kept, I'm a little confused regarding the position you're talking about. Sometimes, uh, you know, during the discussion, it was mentioned it was cons- a consultant. Other times hiring someone a- as if it was, this person would be an employee. Um, my concern is not only the salary, but also uh in benefits. Which can, if they're an employee, they can result in post-employment benefits later on down the line. So I was just like a clarification, are you looking at a consultant such as an independent contractor? Or hiring an actual employee? Um, um, one issue has been the HR position. The town of Great Barrington started out. As a shared position and now Great Barrington is. Taking on more of the weight of that position. Uh, so that could be clarified for me. And then, um, secondly, um, the tax on real estate sales. It's something I'm very much opposed to. Um. My husband and I, as was stated during the discussion on short-term rental bylaw. It was, short-term rental was something we were going to do to supplement our retirement, when that. The limited amount of days would not. Work with us, but we said, okay, if things get difficult, we could always sell the property. Now, this is a property where my parents pay taxes, real estate taxes to the town of Great Barrington. For over sixty-two years before they died and now my husband and I are paying taxes, yet we're going to be taxed again. Not to mention, we have a CPA surcharge tax. And um, a just a heads up on that will be something I will campaign against. The third thing is, I know there are members on this committee who are members of the CPA committee. And I'm hearing discussions of going to the CPA for money. Uh, for um, the position you were discussing, discussing the consultant position. A little uncomfortable because we have members on this committee. Who want to come up with a proposal to bring to a committee they're already on. Uh, it, to me, it's almost like double jipping the boat. So there are three things that. Just kind of rubbed me the wrong way tonight. And again, I I would be on his, on Zoom with you, uh, but I wasn't able to sign on. But for now, if somebody could just clarify the the position you're.
Sure, um, thank you. Real quick, um, so, yeah, the the thought is that would be a consultant.
I don't, I don't know if that's really, I I don't know, but I think when a proposal comes, then it would be very clear, right?
Yeah, yeah, so i- it's just.
Well, as as we know, as we know, the. Things can evolve very quickly in the town of Great Barrington and and so, uh, I do my homework. Front load my homework, so I'm asking right now. So it sounds to me you're not sure. Is that correct?
I mean, I.
Need and and we're identifying the amount of work that that uh. Is needed, so, you know, whether that's existing staff that does that or a consultant. That is not determined yet. So right now, we're just, Malcolm's gonna be putting together reports, so we actually see the items that that need to be addressed. So it's, it's still early.
Wanted to know.
Still very early.
Public record.
Yeah.
That this could be a burden on the taxpayers, on the taxpayers. Because as everyone knows, initially, there may be seed money for the position, but in subsequent budget. Uh, seasons, uh, the town will need to pick up the tab on it. And we'll be picking up the tab on benefits and we'll be picking up the tab on post-employment benefits.
Yes, your points made.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and and just.
Michelle, before you go. Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
Uh, Michelle, um, I had a problem with Zoom um earlier today and I had to re, um. I had to update my Zoom for it to work.
Thank you, Malcolm. All right, I'll try doing that.
That might help.
Yeah, Michelle, I had to, I had to update my Zoom um within the last few days too, when I tried to. To do, to do a Zoom meeting as well.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you.
And thank you, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle, and um, to your point about the CPC, I've recused myself on anything. That has to do with affordable housing on the CPC, so I I don't have a vote on that, so.
But but also, all CPC members represent committees. I mean, we have.
Well, well, mine is is, um, cause I'm a member, I work for construct, so.
Yeah, I mean, but generally, members of the CPC vote on things that their uh boards or committees um propose.
Yeah, yeah, a town, yeah, exactly. So if you're working.
And this is a joint select board and.
Absolutely.
Planning Board Committee, so.
But I mean, it's a, it's a good point, I mean.
It's, it is a good point. I mean, it's definitely heard.
Mm-hmm, thank you, Michelle. Um, okay, so, thank you.
And that's definitely something to consider, because I mean, I think the idea behind this is that this would be a trial position and so you. What Michelle is talking about, like, we don't want more financial implications from this um than what. Would be proposed, right? And so.
Yeah.
In terms of, in terms of benefits or that sort of thing. Yeah.
If we're proposing a long-term position, it has to be funded and.
Yeah, I mean.
It has to be worthwhile.
I don't think the, I think the idea maybe for that, but I don't think the proposal would be anything like that. It would just be very clear-cut, this is only for this period of time. And then leave it to whoever to decide whether, you know, which would be, you know, I would assume would be, would be um. Voters' input as well, but.
Um, thank you very much. Uh, anywhere, anyone from the media would like to ask questions or speak? Okay, um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
And roll call, Jeremy.
Hi.
Malcolm and.
Hi.
And I am I, and we've lost, uh, left Garfield, but. All right, great, great meeting and thank you so much for everything.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a great night.